Her answer was fantastic. I thought it was great.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next we'll hear from Holly Greenleaf Whitney. No relation.
He just sent us some lines of pictures.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Senator Brackey, Representative Gattin, and members of the Health and Human Services Committee. I am Holly Greenleaf Whitney, and I live and work in Washington County. I am a mental health therapist, business owner, wife, and mother to three children, and I'm here to tell my story about my son and to oppose LD 606 and 471. My husband and I have chosen to vaccinate all of our children and want to maintain our rights as parents to exercise vaccine choice. Two of our three are fully vaccinated and one is mostly vaccinated. When our twin boys were born in 2006, our son Ashton nearly died. He had difficulty breathing after swallowing amniotic fluid during a C-section birth. We believe his initial struggle to survive, coupled with a genetic predisposition, caused his immune system to become extremely taxed, sensitive, and reactive. When my son was about 20 months, he had several vaccines, all listed on the extensive vaccine schedule, all at the same time. Within hours, our toddler suffered a negative reaction. I cannot pinpoint which vaccine or particular ingredient caused his reaction because there were so many possibilities. It is also entirely possible that the number of vaccines interacting together was too great of a burden on his immune system. After his vaccines, he spiked a fever of 104. My son cried and was inconsolable for a long period of time. I called the doctor's office and was told that if the fever went higher, I could take him to the ER, but it was not considered high enough to be concerned. I gave him Tylenol for his fever as directed. He also had a lump at the injection site, which was also considered normal. His twin brother did not react the same way. We hoped and prayed that Ashton would not have any long-term effects, however, he was not that fortunate. Ashton's irritability lasted for weeks, and he appeared to be in constant distress. He showed regression and was not able to do things he had previously mastered. He developed problems eating and sleeping. Ashton's speech and language was negatively impacted and caused him extreme frustration. He began to elope. At this time, we became extremely concerned about his safety. I repeatedly asked for a referral for him to be tested, and finally, we received one. At the age of 3 years 9 months, Ashton was diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. It verified for us what we already knew. Ashton regularly sees two physicians assistants, one locally and one out of state. It would be counterproductive to have to go to a doctor that is unfamiliar with my son and his medical issues to get an exemption. The decisions we make for our children are well thought out and do not require further counseling. In conclusion, I have dedicated my life to helping children and adolescents. I hold a master's degree, and I have read hundreds of pages of research supporting our joint decision to not fully complete the vaccine schedule for my son. By suggesting that children's parents do not have the right to choose what is best for their own child is both insulting and violating. One size does not fit off. Please continue to allow every parent the right to choose what is best for their own child. I respectfully ask you to oppose LD 606 and 471. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Chris O'Connell, Dover Foxcroft. Welcome.
Thank you. Just let's say good morning, but it's not morning. Good afternoon, my name is Chris O'Connell. I'm a registered nurse, as well as the father of nine-year-old vaccine-injured, disabled daughter, Julianne, in the back of the room there. I've worked in the medical field for nearly 26 years. My family and I currently live in Dover-Foxcroft, and I'm here today to voice my opposition to bills 606 and 471. First, let me start by saying that as someone who has successfully defended his philosophical position not to receive a mandatory flu vaccine twice while working at Children's Medical Center in Dallas, and someone who has spent the last eight years reading volumes of research on both sides of the vaccine debate, there's absolutely no way to reasonably address in any detail the full spectrum of the issues that need to be taken into consideration regarding these proposed bills in the allotted four-minute timeframe. Having said that, I feel like I'm wasting valuable time already, so right to the point. There are only four vaccines that are currently required to attend public school in Maine. The DTAP, the MMR, the poliomyelitis, and the varicella. According to the CDC.gov website, estimated vaccination coverage for the four required vaccines to attend public school in Maine for the school year 2014 were as follows: DTAP, 87.9%, plus or minus 5.7%, or potentially up to 93.6%. Poliomyelitis, 94%, or plus or minus 3.8%, or potentially 97.8%. MMR, 91%, plus or minus 5%, or potentially up to 95.5%. And varicella, 90.5%, plus or minus 4.5%, potentially up to 95%. So based on the CDC's own published information, we may already be at or very near the coveted 95% rates for those required vaccines to meet their herd immunity theory standards. Despite what you may have heard, according to the CDC's website, over the last several years, vaccination rates for required school vaccines in Maine are actually on the rise. Since the 2011 school year, DTAP coverage has increased 1.3%, MMR is up 0.1%, poliomyelitis is up 1.6%, and varicella coverage has increased 3.3%. To state that the philosophical exemption should be removed due to declining vaccine rates would be misleading. Also, there have been no widespread epidemics of any of these diseases for decades, only local outbreaks around country in mostly vaccinated individuals, an indicator of vaccine failure and not a lack of vaccinated individuals. Vaccines have known risks, up to including death. To date, there have been over 5,000 deaths reported to the CDC and FDA Vaccine Adverse Event Recording System, along with hundreds of thousands of disabling injuries. And it is estimated that only 1 to 10% of vaccine adverse events are ever reported. And since its creation, by the National Child to a Vaccine Injury Act, the National Vaccine Injury Compensation Program, as we've heard earlier, has awarded more than $3.5 billion to citizens and the families for injuries and deaths attributed to vaccines. It is an undisputed scientific fact that vaccines injure and cause death to certain vulnerable people. In the 2011 case, Bruce Witz versus Wyatt, the Supreme Court declared vaccines to be unavoidably unsafe. While the belief is that vaccine mandates seek to protect the majority, they sacrifice an unknowable and unknowing minority. Compulsory vaccination policies, by mandating a minority suffer potentially devastating vaccine side effects, violate that individual's inalienable rights to liberty and security, and when they result in death, they violate the right to life. Taking away any form of exemption, in my opinion, is completely unethical and wrong. What should occur instead is education for parents about the availability of exemptions, while also receiving true and informed consent regarding vaccine injuries and efficacy. Removing the philosophical exemption will serve to mandate an increase in vaccine injuries and possible deaths in those children whose parents wish to avoid these possibilities based on their knowledge, research, experiences, and beliefs. As far as the removal of the philosophical exemption for healthcare workers is concerned, I've already been down that road, fought, and won twice. I would honestly rather abandon my profession than have to fight that fighting. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Questions? Seeing no questions? Thank you very much. Oh, actually, I did have one question. You used to look in the other field for questions. The estimate that only 1 to 10% of vaccine adverse events are ever reported. Where does that estimate come from? I'd love to...
I don't know the exact origin of it. Over the years, I've seen it many, many, many times.
Okay.
I can't tell you the exact origin. I know Dr. -- or Robert Kennedy spoke to it also. It is something that as well now...
Anyone who does have that, I'd just be... Well, not right now, but anyone who does have that, if you're able to communicate it to us, I'd look into that more. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we'll hear from Patrick Karen. And then, before you begin, let me just... Then, we'll be hopping back over to proponents, and I just want to let the next 10 people know. Be hearing from Tina Petten Gill, Anita, I'm not sure if that's a rock or a pop or a bag, Ann Lee, Hussey, Juliana from Thompson, Angelo Westhoff, Anne Graham, Pam Cahill, Deb Diattri, and Gerald Silver of Water Grove. So, thank you very much. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Patrick Karen, and I strongly oppose the act to remove philosophical exemptions. It is every person's right to choose whether or not a potentially dangerous foreign substance is injected into their body. Vaccines are not 100% safe or effective. My son Anthony, like thousands of others, was injured by vaccines. My son has had adverse reactions to every round of vaccines he ever had. The MMR and flu vaccine is known to cause autoimmune disorders. My son's disorder, called CRMO, which is chronic reoccurring multiple osseomyelitis. It is an autoimmune disorder which attacks your bones, very painful. It can cause disfigurements, and I actually consider myself lucky because my son is doing fairly well, considering. We are now pursuing a vaccine injury case, but know that we will most likely be told he is not qualified, and we continue to struggle to pay for his medical needs, which is closing in close to $100,000 at this moment. My insurance has covered most of this cost, but now my insurance is starting to refuse to pay for treatment. And this is the case for most vaccine-injured individuals. So unless vaccine companies are held responsible for the injuries they cause, you cannot remove the philosophical exemption. Maine is my home, and I love it here. I plan on living here for the rest of my life, but I cannot stay here. My right and the right of my loved ones to choose whether or not to be vaccinated is protected. This is all bad. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for sharing your testimony. Seeing no questions? All right, next, we will jump back over to the speaking in favor. Is Tina Petten Gill here? All right, then move right along. Anita, where is that we have? Pop or Rock from that?
It's Rock, not Pop.
Rock, all right.
Or you could say Talk.
Either way. Thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, Senator Brackey, Representative Gattin, and members of the Joint Standing Committee on Health and Human Services. My name is Zoe Rock, and I live in Bath. I'm in the sixth grade at the Center for Teaching and Learning. I'm here today because the immunization issue is more about kids than adults. And I want kids to have a voice in what you decide to say, even though kids aren't eligible, but that's another issue. Here's a little about me. My parents have had me immunized from the time I was very young to my 11-year-old checkup a few months ago. I got four shots then, and it hurt more than when I was an infant. I was extremely nervous, but my mom told me why I should be more nervous about the result of not getting vaccinated. After talking with my mom, I realized that some people think vaccinations are bad. But my generation is seeing things from previous generations because of this issue of people being scared of immunizations. There are lots of reasons why kids should be immunized. The first one is that they're kids, like my friends Henry and Katie, who have asthma. And if there are other kids, if there are around other kids who haven't been immunized, they'll get really sick. Another reason that people shouldn't be afraid to get their kids vaccinated is that they will miss out on school events. Take me, for example. I'd much rather miss school to be here today than to be at home sick. It would make me miss out on things I love, like swim meets or lacrosse games. Also, I want my school, the place where I go and learn every day, to be a healthy, safe place. And finally, there are kids at my school with food allergies. We are asked to be careful with nuts, chocolate, gluten, and dairy products. And that's good because no one wants them to be sick. But the kids who aren't immunized can make everyone else sick. So how fair is that? If we are careful about the kids with food allergies, why aren't we careful about the kids who have been immunized, like me? Shouldn't we have a place where our health matters also? Thank you for giving me the chance to talk with you today.
Thank you, Zoe. Is this your first time testifying before a legislative committee? It is? All right, well, you couldn't tell. You did a wonderful job. Congratulations. Thank you for sharing your thoughts today. Any questions in the committee, Representative Gattin?
Zoe, I'm really afraid of needles, so it's embarrassing to be here, you know, I'm so afraid of needles. Thanks for being here.
All right, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Additional testimony. Anne, we... I'll see, from South. Anne?
I have a satchel.
Well, since we just missed you, we'll get you in next. That's Tina Petten Gill, who we were just looking for.
Well, good afternoon, Senator Brackey, Representative Gattin, and other members of the committee. Anne Karen, I haven't seen you for a long time. Nice to see you. I'm here today to speak in favor and support of LD 471, the Act to Improve Childhood Vaccination Rates in Maine, and I also oppose to 1076, an act to enact the Vaccine Consumer Protection Program. Might I just get off script for just a moment and make a comment about the gentleman who's just up here about hand washing? Because we should know that hand washing is actually the very first defense against all the diseases that we're talking about today. So I recommend that we do it. It is apropos that we should be having this discussion today, just two weeks following World Immunization League, following on April 24th through 30th, a week focused on the global platform to bolster efforts to ensure vaccination coverage for every child and even seniors, no matter where they live. One in five children are still missing out on routine life-saving immunizations that could prevent 1.5 million deaths every year from preventable diseases. We are a global society today. What we do locally ultimately affects others nationally and globally. It is also apropos to be here just four weeks after celebrating the 60th anniversary of the very first polio vaccine developed by Dr. Jonas Salk. On April 12, 1955, when news came out of Inaba, Michigan, that Dr. Salk's vaccine was effective, everyone celebrated. People flooded the streets, tears of joy streaming down their cheeks, sirens and church bells were heard everywhere as parents felt relief that the crippling polio virus would be stopped. It was the height of America's faith in research and science, and vaccines became a routine part of pediatric care. This vaccine was one of the largest medical advances in American history, and it led to a rapid decline in polio cases primarily in the developed world. We owe much to Franklin Delano Roosevelt, who was instrumental in establishing what we know best as the March of Dimes. Millions of dimes, collected by none other than thousands of mothers, funded the research and development of Dr. Salk's injectable polio vaccine. They also funded the oral polio vaccine, which was introduced in 1963, and is used globally today in the polio eradication efforts. Fast forward to today, where in America, resistance to vaccines is growing for no sound scientific reason. We have become a victim of our own success, with a generation who has never witnessed the rampage of diseases known to previous generations. Out of sight, out of mind seems to rule the day. It is disheartening that as one of the most advanced nations of the world, we are sliding backwards in our basic preventative medicine. People opposed to vaccines today have enjoyed the benefits and safety of a well-immunized community, and now wish to deny the same to the children of today. We have not had a widespread disease outbreak, basically because the majority of our population is vaccinated, but this is beginning to change. And I'm here to remind everyone that these preventable diseases are still prevalent in other parts of the world, opportunistic viruses that are finding their way back to America, seeking all unprotected children. Children in our state are unable to build up natural immunity from the wild viruses because these diseases have not existed here for many years. I have worked extensively with Rodeo International and our partners, the World Health Organization, UNICEF, and the Centers for Disease Control, and the Global Polio Eradication Initiative for the last 14 years, traveling multiple times to developing countries in Africa and Asia. I have witnessed firsthand the power of herd immunity, defined as the protection offered to everyone in a community when vaccination rates are high. I have also witnessed active cases of measles, whooping cough, and meningitis, as well as polio. When enough people are immunized against a given disease, it's difficult for the disease to gain traction in the community. This herd of community immunity offers some protection to those unable to receive vaccinations for various reasons, including newborns, individuals with chronic illnesses, et cetera, and those with a immunosuppressed system, by reducing the possibility of an outbreak that could expose them to the disease. It is indeed this herd immunity that is working so effectively in our efforts to eradicate the polio virus from the face of the earth. I am talking about the protection offered to a single person by the power of millions of others, a power that is a responsibility of all of us. It's what we here in Maine are especially known for, Mainers helping each other. Our polio campaigns often include immunizations such as measles and pertussis, and I have seen mothers in the developing world run to reassure their child to receive these vaccines and have watched older siblings bringing younger siblings. Why? Because they see children suffer and the serious disease consequences, or children that die from these diseases they so desperately want to prevent in their own children.
We're at time, so if you could give us some final thoughts?
I will. Absolutely. Among these are the poorest of the poor, where vaccine accessibility is not always present, unlike the advantages of mothers for their children here in Maine. I am... Let me just mention that from 2014 global immunization data compiled by the World Health Organization, the total number of children who died from diseases preventable by vaccines is 1.5 million. About 29% of deaths in children 1 to 59 months of age are vaccine-preventable. I am a polio survivor, having contracted polio three months after the announcement the Salk vaccine was effective, originally paralyzed from the waist down, and I feel blessed to be here today. I do not have time to cover my personal story, but I want you to know that polio lives with you forever, and I recommend that you read the article they sent along with my statement. Every step I take is my reminder to finish the job of polio eradication and drives my passion for healthy children. It is also my reminder why vaccines are so essential. And I urge every committee member that every child you know, every child you see, should be your reminder. There's no room for complacency. I fear for the day that a child in Maine dies from a preventable disease. If we continue to follow our current path, the needless loss of children's lives undoubtedly occur. And I ask you all, what will a mother say to a child who becomes permanently deaf due to measles infection, or to a child whose sibling loses his or her life to a vaccine-preventable disease when they ask the question, "Why was this allowed to happen?", and what will your answer be? Polio and other viruses are but a plane ride away. So thank you for listening, and I'm open to any questions if you have them.
Representative Bashar?
It's so good to see you.
Thank you for coming today.
I remember way back when I was in Rotary, we were saying X percent of the population had been vaccinated against polio. The disease was nearly eradicated. I can't remember what percent of...
We are down to 99% today, and we're building stronger health infrastructures around the world at the same time.
Okay, so when you say polio is a plane ride away, what would happen if something with polio landed here with the immunized population?
If the people were immunized, when that virus were to show up, they would be okay. But if for a child that is not immunized, they would run the risk of contracting polio, which would be, I mean, it's devastating in my book. Just to give you an idea of how easy it is for the polio virus to travel, they're actually... We do surveillance, and we check all the sewer systems, environmental samples around the world constantly to see, to track where the virus is. When the soccer event was going on in Sao Paulo, Brazil, they discovered the polio virus there, brought in by some of the soccer players from Ecuadorian game. And that's how easily it can come to the Americas. Now luckily, that town, that city of Sao Paulo, was heavily vaccinated, so it never went any further. But had they not been, it certainly could have spread. It's that easy. So all I'm saying is if your vaccination rates go down, you run that risk of injury, isn't it?
Seeing no additional questions?
Thank you for allowing me to go the whole.
Tina Petten Gill. As promised, if you miss your slot, we're gonna... Don't need to worry.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for being a good example case, if people know. They can go to Walgreens Center and if they miss a moment.
Good afternoon, Senator Brackey, Representative Gattin, and members of the Committee on Health and Human Services. My name is Tina Petten Gill. I'm the executive director of the Maine Public Health Association and a resident of Scarborough. MPHA is an organization that represents over 400 public health professionals across the state, dedicated to the health and well-being of all Maine people. We're an association that uses data and science to guide our principles and testimony. I'm not gonna read my testimony. I think what I have in here is probably a lot of what you've already heard today. Immunization saves lives. Immunizations are safe and effective. You have heard of what our vaccination rates are in Maine, how some of them are falling and continue to fall. And we are now amongst the lowest in the country with childhood immunization rates. So what I did just want to share, though, and I guess I should have stated ahead of time, it's on my testimony, of course, but we are in support of LD 471, as well as 606, and in opposition of 1076. But anyway, I just wanted to share on a personal note, I feel like every time I come here, I have some kind of personal story, but that these bills are not only about children, of course, they're also about adults. And I wanted to share my personal story around that, is my husband has battled two different types of blood cancers over the last six years. He's undergone a stem cell transplant and many, many rounds of chemotherapy as a result of those blood cancers. He also had a kidney transplant last year due to those cancers. He's doing great now, by the way, but... But some of you might know, the stem cell transplant, which is a treatment for many types of different blood cancers and other types of disorders, completely wipes out your personal immunity. You have... I mean, they do it on purpose, but they completely wipe out your immune system. So any vaccinations you had as a child or throughout your adulthood is completely wiped out. Your body has no memory of those. So for about three years, through all these different types of therapies, he had no immunization protection. But he also, you know, he still, for our family, he still needed to go to work. He still needed to occasionally go to the grocery store. That didn't happen very often, but at least sometimes, the grocery store. And he also needed to attend school events, at public schools and daycares. He needed to continue to be a father and part of our community. So I just wanted to point that example out to you all because these bills aren't just about children. They're about adults in our community, too, that are immunocompromised through no fault of their own. And for some people, like my husband, for many, many years, he actually continues to this day, almost six years later, is still immunocompromised because his immune system is low enough that there are still vaccines that he can't... He still can't have. So I just want to bring that up and make sure the adults are also in the picture, as well as children. And thank you for giving us all so much time today.
Thank you, Tina Petten Gill. Any questions? Thank you very much. Next on the list is Juliana LaRue.
Dear Senator Brackey, Representative Gattin, and members of the Joint Standing Committee on Health and Human Services. My name is Juliana LaRue. I am a nurse and a resident of Thompson, Maine. I am speaking today for the American Nurses Association of Maine in support of LD 471, an act to improve childhood vaccination rates in Maine, and in opposition to LD 1076. I didn't know you were going to be separating those out in a separate hearing, so I would just say that we support the statement that Holly Lust gave you, and we oppose 1076. I won't read that testimony. So ANA Maine is a professional membership association, representing 353 members, who are nurses who work in every field of healthcare in Maine and in the nursing schools and universities. I am speaking here today for the public health because nurses are the first line of caregivers when an infectious disease permeates a community. when an infectious disease permeates a community. And we have seen that in recent years with the bird flu scare, for example, that never really materialized. But nurses were the first ones that were educated in infection control and how to manage an epidemic, along with all of our healthcare colleagues. So we're well aware of how we are in support of the public health whenever there is an epidemic. So in speaking to Representative Hymanston's concerns about doing the greatest good for the greatest number of people, we would echo that. We are speaking in support of the public health. So in support of that, I just want to give you my personal story, that, you know, I unfortunately, or fortunately, I did grow up in an era where children had infectious diseases. I even remember my mother standing in line for hours to get me a smallpox vaccination. I was very young, but I remember because we stood in line for so long. And the same thing in 1955, when the polio vaccine came out. We stood in line for, I would suspect, three hours to get our polio vaccine. And you know what? Our parents were so proud that they could give those vaccines to us, because to them it was the gift of good health, and they wouldn't have to worry about us coming down with these deadly diseases. Today, we have, you know, the benefit of vaccines for the greater good, to prevent measles, to prevent mumps, rubella, whooping cough, ephelia. We have so much more benefit from vaccines than when I was growing up, and we have a healthier community as a result. The ANA believes that children should all be offered the opportunity for vaccinations for preventable diseases. We support LD-471, and I just want to say that I just really hope that we never see a time when we go back to having preventable pandemics and epidemics. And I wouldn't want to see us get so embroiled in some of the emotional issues that we would forget to protect the greater public at large. So, I also included in my testimony, because I happen to be working on the history of nursing in Maine, which, by the way, is 100 years old this year, and this was a picture that was allowed us for the Nursing History Project. And for those of you who don't know what an iron lung looks like, and honestly, I never nursed anyone in an iron lung either, but this is a real Maine medical center patient who is being treated in an iron lung by Maine nurses. And speaking to the protection for adults, I also included an article about post-polio syndrome. So people who are immune, who receive immunity to polio also have the benefit of that in adulthood, and this is a very good article to raise that awareness, so it's not just about children, to be honest. Thank you very, very much for your time.
Any questions? Thank you. No? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Senator Brakey, Representative Gattin, and distinguished members of the Health and Human Services Committee. My name is Angela Westhoff. I'm the executive director of the Maine Osteopathic Association, and I'm a resident of Waterville. As you know, the MOA is a professional organization representing approximately 400 osteopathic physicians and an additional 500 residents and med students. Our mission is to serve the osteopathic profession of the state through coordinated efforts of professional education, advocacy, and member services in order to ensure the availability of quality osteopathic healthcare for people in Maine. We're here today to submit testimony in support of LD-471, an act to improve childhood vaccination rates. We're also testifying neither for nor against LD-606, and in opposition to LD-1076. I apologize, I combined them all into one, but I promise I'll stick within my four minutes. I'm not going to read verbatim the testimony that we have drafted here today. You've heard a lot of statistics, a lot of information, and I don't think I need to repeat that. We talked about Maine's decreasing rate of childhood immunizations. We know that we are now the seventh lowest in the country. That's concerning to the MOA. We strongly support policies that promote informed decision-making among parents, including making sure that parents have access to credible medically-based information about vaccinations and vaccines for renewable diseases. We believe that LD-471 will help achieve this. We also know that there are many sources of misinformation out there. Parents do the best they can with the information that they have. We also know that parents tend to seek information online. It's the age of Google, right? Everybody Googles information, and sometimes that information is inaccurate or incomplete. And we believe 471 would help fill in those blanks. It does not eliminate philosophical exemptions, but basically would require the parent to have a conversation with the child's healthcare practitioner. Amongst our physician members, we had really long conversations about LD-606, and I just wanted to comment that we weighed the pros and cons. Some of our members wanted to do away with philosophical exemptions altogether, saying that it's too easy of an out, but ultimately, we decided that we would be neither for nor against, but citing that Maine is only one of 19 states that allows for philosophical exemptions based on personal beliefs. And it is not surprising that those states with philosophical exemptions have lower immunization rates. I know that you aren't going to, you're gonna have a separate here on LD-1076, but I just wanted to go on the record as saying that we are opposed to that. It already exists at the federal level. Creating another Vaccine Consumer Protection Program is redundant and would cost additional monies. Vaccines save lives. When immunization levels fall, we leave our children, our most vulnerable citizens, at risk of serious disease. The World Health Organization, the US Center for Disease Control and Prevention, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and many other reputable healthcare organizations support immunizations because they are an easy and effective way to keep our children, families, and communities safe and healthy. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Westhoff. Representative Hymanston.
Thank you. Hi. I'm never anxious to introduce an extra layer of bureaucracy in the acquisition-patient relationship. So I wonder if you've talked with your other osteopaths about 471, which would introduce an extra layer of form to sign and to take responsibility for, and can you go through that?
Sure. We did have a conversation about sort of what happens now already to achieve informed consent, the vaccine information sheet, that conversation...